Good evening. Welcome to our May 13th regular meeting. Five o'clock we get started and it says five o'clock. So, thank you for gathering together at this moment. Would you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? Directly after, we will do our Kids That Hope Treasure Hunters pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, our nation, our God, and the invisible, the liberty and justice law.
Please remain standing. As an adult and president, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. You may be seated. I will first announce our school board running scroll that plays over and over before we start our school board meeting. If you turn on the, our media channel, you will see it before the school board meetings start. And we scroll that over and over for 15 minutes just so that if you have time, you can get used to what we're going to do this evening on the agenda. We have also a QR code that you can go on to assess the agenda. And of course, you can go and find our agenda on our website and in person. Our in-person or our people that are here tonight, please make sure you pick up an agenda at the front door. That way you can follow us and you can take it home with you to reread it if you need to. So, we're going to go right into our public hearing because we do have one this evening. This public hearing is the proposed adoption of 2025-2026 Student Code of Conduct and Amendments to School Board Policy, Fiscal Planning Policy, Construction, Contracting, and Bidding Policy, Instructional Materials Allocation Policy, and Nursing Mothers. And at this time, we will open up our public hearing for anyone in the audience who would like to comment on any of these items. You may come up to the podium if you have a comment. All right, seeing none, we move right along. Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
I recommend the board adopt the proposed 2025-26 Student Code of Conduct and Proposed Amendments to School Board Policy Number 6210, Fiscal Planning Policy Number 6322, Construction, Contracting, and Bidding Policy 6661, Instructional Materials Allocation, and Policy Number 8280, Nursing Mothers.
So moved.
So moved by, who was that? Ms. Arison, second. Second by Mr. Ingersoll. Okay, any discussion board? No discussion on any of the policies, so seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We will continue our public hearing at this time to receive the public comment on high school personal finance and money management instructional materials adoption. At this time, we open up the podium again. If anyone would like to speak on, in this area, the description of this is that St. Lucie County Schools Review Committee met Monday, April 21st, 2025 during a publicly noticed meeting. The adoption process involved a print and digital review of the text with a completion of the evaluation rubic for each series. Committee members were able to assess each publisher's content and bid information and rate each program. Committee members comprised of teachers, community members, and parents. They had the opportunity to review the materials from the state short bid list. And so, if there is anyone once again in the public that would like to comment toward these, that you come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none. At this time, the public hearing is closed. Superintendent Prince, would you please give us our special orders of business?
I'm always pleased to introduce the best chief of communications, not only in the state of Florida, but in the entirety of these United States, Ms. Lydia Martin.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Prince, the month of May has been designated as National Speech Language Hearing Month, and at this time, I'd like to invite Program Specialist Jennifer Carey to share information about this recognition.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Mills, Dr. Prince, and School Board Members. I'm Jennifer Carey, Program Specialist for Speech, Language, and the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Programs. Tonight, Nikki O'Neil, Speech Language Pathologist from St. Lucie West K8 will speak, and then Cheyenne Cummings, our student, will read the proclamation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Mills, Superintendent Dr. Prince, and School Board Members. I would like to proudly highlight the meaningful impact speech and language pathologists have on our St. Lucie County Public School students. Currently, we provide services to 5,100 students across our district who have diagnosed speech and language disorders. Each day, my colleagues and I work tirelessly providing screenings, evaluations, individualized educational plans, or IEPs, therapy, all while addressing the unique challenges of our students daily. Our work encompasses many areas such as speech, fluency, voice, language, hearing, augmentative and alternative communication, as well as swallowing. Our dedicated team of 64 professionals ensures that these services are delivered to meet the diverse needs of students in St. Lucie Public Schools. For our students, developing effective communication skills is crucial for fostering independence and enabling them to contribute positively to society. May I ask my team of colleagues who are present tonight, both current and retired, to please rise? We all warmly welcome all School Board Members, and especially Dr. Prince, to come and observe our speech and language pathologists as we empower St. Lucie Public School students to strengthen their communication skills. I will now hand it back over to Jennifer Carey, our amazing Program Specialist, who works consistently and goes above and beyond to ensure that our department runs seamlessly.
Thank you, Nikki. I would like to introduce Cheyenne Cummings, who will read tonight's proclamation. I want to add that she wrote this bio herself. Cheyenne is a senior at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. She has a 3.17 weighted GPA. Her hobbies include cooking and baking. While at Fort Pierce Westwood, she earned a Safe Serve Certification in Culinary. She enjoys working with technology, editing websites, and WordPress. She has also earned a certification in technology. She enjoys health sciences and will be taking the CHEER certification test at the end of the school year. While at Fort Pierce Westwood, she has been a Health Occupation Students of America volunteer and the school media manager for the high school and the Hosa Club. She has been actively involved with the poem club, the theater club, and the knowledge club. After graduation, Cheyenne plans to attend a local college to become a medical assistant or doctor in pediatrics, or Heather Rowland suggested today maybe a speech-language pathologist. She's not exactly sure what type of pediatric doctor she wants to be yet, but she knows she wants to work with kids. She is also considering becoming an EMT to begin her medical career until she can attend nursing or medical school. At birth, Cheyenne was diagnosed with a unilateral hearing loss in her left ear. As challenging as it was dealing with speech therapies growing up and constantly having to help people understand her point of view as someone who is deaf and hard of hearing, she still prevailed and made many accomplishments along the way. She speaks openly about being a child of a broken family and the struggles that she has faced. Despite switching schools multiple times, she's made many friends and created a strong support system. She hopes that other kids going through similar challenges get the help they need and have the same strength she did to face whatever is thrown at them. Cheyenne will now read the proclamation designating the month of May as National Speech Language Hearing Month.
St. Lucie Public Schools Proclamation, National Speech Language Hearing Month 2025. Whereas many of us take communication for granted, illness or injury makes speaking and hearing a challenge for many Americans. And whereas impairing communication, speech, language, and hearing disorders can limit academic achievement, social adjustment, and career advancement. And whereas by impairing communication, speech, language, and hearing disorders can limit academic achievement, low social adjustment, and career advancement. And whereas audiologists and speech-language pathologists and professionals who specialize in the identification and treatment of communications disorders, conditions that affect millions of Americans. And whereas each year during the month of May, audiologists and speech-language pathologists throughout the nation make a special effort to inform, educate, and raise public awareness of speech, language, and hearing impairments. And whereas more than 42 million people in America, one in 10 families have hearing, speech, and language impairment. Whereas most people with communicative disorders can be helped through medical and surgical treatment, hearing aids, and hearing and speech rehabilitation. And whereas with early diagnosis and proper treatment, most people with communication disorders can lead full and productive lives. And therefore, St. Lucie Public Schools proclaims May 1st through the 31st, 2025 as National Speech Language Hearing Month in St. Lucie Public Schools.
Okay, Board Members, young lady did a wonderful job presenting the National Speech Language Hearing Month proclamation. At this time, Board Members, I will entertain a motion in the second to adopt May 1st through May 31st as the month for National Speech Language. So moved by Ms. Harley?
Second.
Second by Ms. Arison. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. The month of May has also been designated as Mental Health Awareness Month, and I'd like to invite Dr. Michelle Gillard, Coordinator of Mental Health Psychological and Social Services, to the podium, who will share information about this special recognition.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. Each May, we recognize Mental Health Awareness Month, and I am proud to introduce one of our amazing school-based mental health counselors, Ms. Jeannie Jones, who will introduce one of her students to read this month's proclamation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. As a mental health counselor and advocate, I am proud to introduce one of our amazing students from Ala Pata Flats K8, Kiara Licaro, who will read this year's mental health proclamation.
Good evening. Mental health is an essential component of overall health and well-being, and through working together to raise public awareness and reduce stigma around seeking mental health treatment, we can improve the lives of individuals and families experiencing mental health challenges. And whereas, mental health conditions impact one in five youth, and of those, only half will receive treatment for these conditions. And whereas, evidence-based mental and behavioral health training teaches adults how to recognize signs and symptoms of mental health and substance use problems in youth, and provide adults with skills to use a five-step action plan to help youth who may be facing a mental health problem or crisis such as suicide. And whereas, a lack of mental health awareness leads to a devastating impact on the well-being of individuals and society. And whereas, during Mental Health Awareness Month and throughout the year, the St. Lucie Public Schools District is committed to ending stigma surrounding mental health and promoting solutions to the mental health struggles of its students. Therefore, be resolved that the Board of St. Lucie County does hereby proclaim the month of May as a Mental Health Awareness Month, signed and sealed this 13th of May, 2025.
I'm approving the proclamation, young lady. Mental Health Awareness Month, proclamation to May. Board Members, I will entertain a motion in the second. So moved, Ms. Harley?
Second.
Second is Ms. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you. The Read to Succeed program, which just completed its highly successful second year, is a partnership between St. Lucie Public Schools, Big Apple Pizza, Fort Pierce, and Bayshore, as well as the Education Foundation of St. Lucie County, has made a significant impact on promoting literacy among students in St. Lucie Public Schools. At this time, I'd like to invite Scott Van Duser, owner of Big Apple Pizza, Fort Pierce, and founder and president of the Van Duser Foundation, who will share the results of this year's contest.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Prince, it is unbelievable. It's been two years just like that. And tonight, I'd like to share a little light. This year was beyond my expectations. In two years, we've reached 5,645 readers. We've handed out almost 20,000 books and raised almost $60,000. That went right back to the schools. And everyone says it's always me, 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 but I really like to take this opportunity because we, it went from a small idea very quickly into a very powerful little group of people in this community that I would like other people to see. Where are they? Ryan and Eve? I met with Dr. Prince, Dr. Wild, two years ago, and I had a crazy, crazy idea. And from that, I got to meet Mrs. Lydia Martin, and this year, DeJohn Jackson, and, you know, people don't understand how you move that many people and get that much done. And it's not just me, it's a team of people. And tonight, I want them to shine more than the program because first and foremost, Ryan and Eve, if you guys can come up, they own one overview. Don't live in our community, but they solely donated $10,000 to fund the program for the winning school this year. And that's what it's about. They live in, we live in Gavall, right? They live in Vero Beach. And, you know, I'm a big component, anybody can write a check, but they were there for every Read to Succeed night, and it is a long program. It is not a one-and-done. It was over three and a half months, and I can't thank you. If you'd like to say a couple words, you're good, but I wish we had more people like that outside the community that would come in and step up, so. Sean Boyle from the Children's Service Council. Everyone knows Sean. He was there from day one as well, and the commitment with you, I thank you because without you, we would not be able to do what we do, so. If you want to say, that's how humble they are. I know somebody will say something. Rick, get up here. Come on. I don't know if you guys, Treasure Coast Sports Commission, if anybody knows who or what they do. The winner of the winning school at the end of the year, we host a party, no matter how many students they have, and I think this one, they have almost 700, 800 kids. These are the guys that fill the party on, five bounce houses, Kona Ice, cooking hotdogs and chips for however many students there. And they've been with us since day one as well, so I want to say thank you to Rick, and I tell them who you are and what you do. Somebody say something besides me.
Thank you. Rick Hatch, your president, CEO, play Treasure Coast Sports Tourism, formerly Treasure Coast Sports Commission. And when we were first approached by Scott, said, "I got an idea." It's one of those where, you know, said, whatever he says, Scott's so invested in the community and the kids, we knew we were on board. Even though the goal for the Sports Commission is to bring sports tourism investors into our community, this is helping kids in our community, so we were on board. So Scott, thank you for the opportunity to allow us to be part of it.
Thank you, my friend. And I'm very excited that Tom Jones from the Education Foundation is stepping up. Where are you, my friend? He's going to be one of our main partners moving forward and helping us to be bigger and better at what we do, and thank you for your involvement as well.
Thank you. The Education Foundation was proud to match the Van Buren's $10,000, so we're awarding tonight a total of $20,000. I'd like to call up Principal Felicia Nixon from Lawnood. Please step forward. Kathy Ann Beish Potenza from St. Lucie, please step forward. And Heather Rixager from Fairlawn, the number one winner.
And what we're going to do is we're going to get three photos. So first, we will do third place winner, Lawnood Elementary, and if I could have St. Lucie and Fairlawn just hang out on the wing because we have a lot of people in this photo. Congratulations, Lawnood, and we will have St. Lucie Elementary come and do the photo next.
These sessions were held at the district office after hours and were facilitated by Dr. Kevin G. Perry. The second initiative centered around targeted professional learning for classroom teachers. These monthly sessions aim to deepen pedagogical expertise through the study and application of high-yield instructional strategies. This professional learning was led by the team of instructional specialists in talent development and was also held at the district office. In the past, participants in both programs were selected through nominations from their principals or immediate supervisors. Today, teacher leaders are invited to Teacher Leader Academy, a vibrant community of dedicated educators who voluntarily come together to learn, collaborate, and inspire change. Their work not only enhances student outcomes, but also supports their own personal and professional growth. At this time, I welcome Dr. Kevin Perry, who will provide a closer look into a year, the first year, into this dynamic three-year program.
So what is a teacher leader experience and how is it implemented? Glad you ask. As DeeDee mentioned, Denise Rodriguez, Executive Director of Teaching, Learning, and Leading, thought it would be beneficial to combine the two initiatives to strengthen the experiences for the teachers. That's where I came in. When I was asked to collaborate and design this experience with the amazing DeeDee Johnson, I knew in doing so, I needed to bring my best thinking and experience from the past forty years of teaching, leading, and mentoring. So we pondered the question, what does a teacher leader need to know? We knew that they were great teachers, we knew that on their campuses, they had a strong presence and a strong voice. So again, we asked the question, outside of instruction and data and teaching and learning, what is it that they really needed to know? While brainstorming, we looked at the working behind the doors of the lobby that could serve as a source of information to leaders, and it caused us to again ask, what is it that they really needed to know? We began by talking about the multifaceted work that each of us are involved in on a daily basis, and we talked about that which we wish we knew and had early in our careers. It came down to two simple words, what and who. It reminded me to use the KISS system, keep it simple, sir. Once we had the answer, we set out to design the Year One experience. That experience includes a deep dive into operations and functions of the district and the people who make those functions work. Imagine a teacher having an opportunity to sit for two hours with the brilliant Bridget Hargadine, discussing the creation and implementation of the district's strategic plan and how they play a role in accomplishing it. Imagine a group of teachers receiving a backstage pass to boldly go where most don't get a chance to, and have the opportunity to visit every floor in this building and sit with department representatives like the cool, calm, and collected Niall Gentry, and experience his passion for his work as he shows us and discusses the technology brain that powers the work for St. Lucy Public Schools. You should really see him. It's like he puts on his Superman cape and transforms into Mr. Technology. Or maybe it's visiting with the amazing Ed Morales and exploring the many capabilities of the print shop. Believe me, it's more than ink and paper and student handbooks. In addition, having the opportunity to meet with and talk with the executive directors who supervise the very schools they work in. Imagine being given a chance to discuss the responsibilities and functions of the HR Department with Dr. Sanchez, the Student Services Department with Heather Roland and Marcy Lucky. In addition, you have the opportunity to speak with the magnificent Michelle Jerger. We all know that student assignment ensures that 45,000 students have a permanent home school, but most of us don't know that student assignment is also home for the students who fall under the McKinney-Vento Act. They also have a designated community outreach parent information specialist, and can you guess how many languages are spoken in student assignment alone? Six. They really can communicate with everyone. And imagine this time of the year, as Year One comes to a close, these teachers are able to take their new learning and participate in the "Who's at Your Table?" exercise and create what we've labeled the Teacher Leader Vision Board. And the grand finale, to end it all, is a power conversation that includes Superintendent John R. Prince and the chiefs. How cool is that? The idea is that these teacher leaders will take this new learning back to their campuses and thus be better informed to share correct information with their colleagues on a daily basis. The idea is that we continue to develop better-informed field soldiers who are armed with, number one, the what? That which is important and guides the work of the district and that's pushing teaching and learning forward. And two, the who? Those individuals we often hear of but never see. It allows these leaders to put a face with a name and provides a contact if there is ever a need for additional assistance. Thus, we provide a practical approach to educate educators. To wrap it up, here's Anna Babcock, our 2024 Teacher of the Year and Teacher Leader.
I was able to participate in Year One, and Dr. Perry and Ms. Johnson took us around the district. I got to see some of your desks. I saw his organized piles as well at his desk. They're organized, kind of. But let me move into Year Two, which I just completed. Year Two of Teacher Leader Academy features our Learning Expedition Series guided by St. Lucy Public Schools' Talent Development Instructional Specialist, Dr. Benner Odenes. It is a once-a-month-after-school, site-based professional learning experience for teacher leaders and brand-new teachers. Each expedition is hosted by a teacher leader at their school site. It is a hands-on exploration of the host teacher leader's classroom and their best instructional strategies. We would conclude our sessions with a small group discussion guided by our teacher leaders, focusing on sharing ideas and practical solutions for common classroom challenges for our new teachers. Since we are a data-driven district, I found a unique way to track our success of Learning Expedition Series by counting the number of pizza boxes ordered for each monthly session. If the stat gets taller each month, I know that we're doing something right. So yes, you could say I've been measuring impacts one slice at a time. Year Three, when we move into Year Three of the Teacher Leader Academy, it's a preparation and training of teacher leaders for a teacher-led conference at the district office called Innovate Ed. It is a professional learning opportunity of best instructional strategies for teachers delivered by teachers. And I know I keep saying teachers, but it's for teachers and by teachers. St. Lucy Public Schools' Teacher Academy is a collaboration with teacher leaders, talent development, and St. Lucy Education Foundation. I would like to thank the Education Foundation for sponsoring our shirts, food, and teacher resources for our sessions. At this time, I'd like to invite our teacher leaders to come forward for a group photo with their classroom resource bags from the Education Foundation. Next, we are very proud to announce that the St. Lucy Public Schools has won first next. place in the Commissioners Academic Challenge for Division Two. Held each spring, teams are challenged with academic questions from a wide range of content, including language arts, mathematics, science, social studies, the fine arts, world languages, physical education, health, and technology. This victory is particularly significant as it is the first time in over two decades that the St. Lucy Public Schools team has secured the top position in this prestigious competition. I'd like to invite our students from Treasure Coast High School, Aiden Ortado, Corey Pope, Gabriel Goby, Sebastian Rubello, and Jaden McGregor from Fort Pierce Central High School to come forward, along with their coaches, Stephen Maxwell from Treasure Coast High School, and Peter Mizuraki from Fort Pierce Central High School. This accomplishment also reflects the outstanding support and guidance provided by their wonderful coaches, and I wanted to note that Corey Pope, Corey, if you could wave, Corey Pope is now a member of the 2025 Florida Team, representing the state of Florida in the national competition and earning a $1,000 scholarship. So congratulations to these wonderful academically talented students and their coaches. And let me, if everyone can take a look at these wonderful shirts that they have, they're sponsored by the Education Foundation of St. Lucy County, so thank you once again, Education Foundation. Okay, our last, but certainly not least, special recognition comes in the form of an Odyssey of the Mind, Omer Award, and I'd like to invite Judy Ackerman. She is here to present the Palms Region Odyssey of the Mind Omer Award to Dr. Prince in recognition of his exemplary example he has set as a superintendent in supporting Odyssey of the Mind in St. Lucy Public Schools. The Palms Region is made up of eight counties, and the Omer Award is presented in recognition that he sets as a superintendent in supporting Odyssey of the Mind in St. Lucy Public Schools. And I'm sure that Ms. Ackerman would like to share just a few words.
Thank you. I'll pass that off to you. So one of the reasons that Dr. Prince is being awarded the Omer Award is that he sets such an amazing example for all the superintendents in the state of Florida. We brag about St. Lucy County quite a bit at the state level, just so you know. Our region is made up of eight counties, and you definitely stand out among them. In the 2022-2023 school year, Dr. Prince helped us find a home for our regional tournament in St. Lucy Public Schools. We weren't sure if we were going to be able to have a tournament, that was huge. Treasure Coast High School and Jason Monroe and Dr. Prince have helped us stay in St. Lucy County. We do have quite the presence here. Well over 500 students just in the past two years have participated in Odyssey. Over sixty teams have competed in our regional tournament just from St. Lucy County schools. We now draw schools from Miami who actually love coming up to St. Lucy County. At this time, I'd like to invite our teacher leaders to come forward for a group photo with their classroom resource bags from the Education Foundation. All right, congratulations to all of the participants. Next, we are very proud to announce that the St. Lucy Public Schools has won the first, has won first place in the Commissioners Academic Challenge for Division Two. Held each spring, teams are challenged with academic questions from a wide range of content including language arts, mathematics, science, social studies, the fine arts, world languages, physical education, health, and technology. This victory is particularly significant as it is the first time in over two decades that the St. Lucy Public Schools team has secured the top position in this prestigious competition. I'd like to invite our students from Treasure Coast High School, Aiden Ortado, Corey Pope, Gabriel Goby, Sebastian Rubello, and Jaden McGregor from Fort Pierce Central High School to come forward, along with their coaches, Stephen Maxwell from Treasure Coast High School and Peter Mizuraki from Fort Pierce Central High School. This accomplishment also reflects the outstanding support and guidance provided by their wonderful coaches. And I wanted to note that Corey Pope, Corey, if you could wave. Corey Pope is now a member of the 2025 Florida team, representing the state of Florida in the national competition and earning a $1,000 scholarship. So congratulations to these wonderful academically talented students and their coaches. And let me, if everyone can take a look at these wonderful shirts that they have. They're sponsored by the Education Foundation of St. Lucy County. So thank you once again, Education Foundation. Okay, our last but certainly not least special recognition comes in the form of an Odyssey of the Mind, Omer Award. And I'd like to invite Judy Ackerman. She is here to present the Palms Region Odyssey of the Mind, Omer Award to Dr. Prince in recognition of his exemplary example he has set as a superintendent in supporting Odyssey of the Mind in St. Lucy Public Schools. The Palms Region is made up of eight counties, and the Omer Award is presented in recognition that he sets as a superintendent in supporting Odyssey of the Mind in St. Lucy Public Schools. And I'm sure that Ms. Ackerman would like to share just a few words.
Thank you. I'll pass that off to you. So, one of the reasons that Dr. Prince is being awarded the Omer Award is that he sets such an amazing example for all the superintendents in the state of Florida. We brag about St. Lucy County quite a bit at the state level, just so you know. Our region is made up of eight counties, and you definitely stand out among them. In the 2022-2023 school year, Dr. Prince helped us find a home for our regional tournament in St. Lucy Public Schools. We weren't sure if we were going to be able to have a tournament. That was huge. Treasure Coast High School and Jason Monroe and Dr. Prince have helped us stay in St. Lucy County. We do have quite the presence here. Well over 500 students just in the past two years have participated in Odyssey. Over 60 teams have competed in our regional tournament just from St. Lucy County schools. We now draw schools from Miami who actually love coming up to St. Lucy County. Even though I offer to go down there, they want to come up to you guys. So that's testament to you. Thirty of your teams have moved on to the state tournament, and St. Lucy County actually has, of all of our counties, the largest representation going on to world. And this year, you have two teams going on to the world competition. One is from Morningside Elementary. That, that team is the true spirit of perseverance. Those children have been together since primary, which is a K-12 problem. They're in fifth grade, and they're, they finally made it, so we were all crying. And the other team is from Windmill Point Elementary. They actually won first place in the structure competition at state this year, holding 805 pounds on a structure this big that weighed very little. So they have been working very hard. They need the extension pole and the help because they can't even reach the top to put the weights on. You also had, of course, the first team in our region to ever win first place at the world competition. Fairlawn won from over 60 international teams. And believe it or not, I saved the best for last. In the last three years, you have had three students win senior scholarships. Our regional senior scholarship last year went to Samantha Rudding from St. Lucy West Centennial. This year went to Addison Moore, also from St. Lucy West Centennial. And you had the state winner of the senior scholarship from St. Lucy County up on that stage at state tournament. Emily Simmons, she won $1,000. But also, the video she created is going to be used throughout the state of Florida, and I'm betting it's going to go viral and be internationally used. It's pretty incredible. So we'd just like to thank you, Dr. Prince, for your support for Odyssey of the Mind in St. Lucy County.
And I see some OM students here and their families. If you guys would like to come forward, we'd love to have you join us for this photograph. I'm wearing multiple shirts today. Okay, one second. All right, congratulations to all. And Madam Chair, that concludes our special recognitions for this evening.
Wow, what an evening, huh? We have such great things going on in St. Lucy County School District. And it really attributes to the great administration and teachers and support staff that we have here and what we're doing to make a difference. At this time, EASL report. I see that Mr. David Freeman is here. He is the president of the EASL. Welcome, David.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Prince. So sometimes, I'm going to start with, sometimes people think I'm the union. I speak for myself. That's not really my job. I speak for my members and the members of the union, employees in the district. And recently, I wrote an article in our Voice, and if you guys don't get the Voice, I'll be happy to send it to you, Amazing Amazing Magazine or Newsletter. But I wrote an article, and you guys may know I'm a math guy, but I dabble in writing. And as a writer, it's gratifying when it resonates with the people that you're writing it to. And I've gotten more emails and Facebook posts and phone calls about that article than any other wanting thing's ever been in the Voice. And this is something that's been ongoing for this entire year. I've got dozens and dozens of emails about the subject I want to talk about. And it's interesting that this comes up in light of everything we've seen this evening. So many of my colleagues are asking, why do I want to be in A District? Why is that important to me? We've been told that success would lead to more freedom and more autonomy, more trust in our professional judgment. Success was supposed to allow us to focus on what matters most, being the needs of our students. But the push to be in A District is driving us in the opposite direction. Instead of freedom, we've seen an increase in micromanagement. Teachers are being told to follow scripts rather than being trusted to develop their own strategies. Administrators and others taking over classes rather than providing support. Collaboration is being replaced by compliance, and there's an overemphasis on pacing rather than purpose. Our success should be a celebration of the work done by teachers, support staff, and everyone in our schools. Professionals in the classrooms and schools are the ones who have made this success possible. Yet it feels as though this success is being used to justify more control rather than recognizing the expertise of those who did the work. When we were a district on the rise, we felt we had more trust, more freedom, and more space to lead. We had more voice in how we taught, how we worked, and how we supported our students. Now, with the intense push to become an A District, we're seeing a shift where the very professionalism that fueled our success is being stripped away. The push for perfection is taking away from what made our success possible in the first place. We're not questioning the desire for excellence. We're teachers. We want to be excellent. We want our students to be successful. But we're questioning the cost of that pursuit. Is striving for an A truly about excellence, or is it simply a numbers game? When we've achieved success, it has come at the expense of our professionalism. Data walls, pacing mandates, and an increasing sense that our autonomy is being undermined are all byproducts of this push. We ask for respect, resources, and autonomy that should come with the success we've worked so hard to build. We've earned the right to be trusted professionals, to lead our classrooms and schools with the same expertise that made this success possible. It's time we demand our voices be heard, not just in moments of celebration, but in how we teach and support our students moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. CWA report, Ms. Vickers? No report this evening from CWA. We're going to move right along to St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council. I believe we have Ms. Morgan in the audience this evening. She's the president over the Youth Advisory Council. Welcome, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Prince, and guests. I'm Alexia Morgan, and I have the privilege of serving as chairperson of the St. Lucy Public County Schools Youth Advisory Council for the 2024-2025 school year. I'm here today to provide a brief summary on our most recent meeting and reflect on our council's accomplishments throughout the year. Our final Yak meeting took place on April 28th at St. Lucy West Centennial High School. During the meeting, student representatives from each high school presented updates on school events, student concerns, and celebrations. These reports continue to be a vital opportunity for students to stay, stay connected and inspired by the work happening across the district. Some of the highlights included senior celebrations across campuses, including grad bashes, senior breakfasts, cookouts, and college signing days. There was also academic engagement such as ACE testing, DECA International Competition participation, and boot camp supporting student success. There were also creative and cultural events, including theater productions, career fairs, band and chorus concerts, and cultural appreciation days across schools. And lastly, student leadership and recognition with NHS inductions, SGA elections, and student awards. Beyond the individual school highlights, the council took time to reflect on our broader impact this year. Through regular meetings and collaborative discussions, we helped address real student issues from scheduling challenges to technology concerns. We also facilitated cross-school dialogue that brought clarity to students and created shared solutions. This year's motto became clear, that common people can do uncommon things, especially when given the opportunity to lead. As chairperson, it's been an incredible honor to work alongside such motivated and thoughtful student leaders. This role has allowed me to grow in confidence, empathy, and leadership. It reminded me that student voices are not just valuable, they are essential to shaping a school environment that works for everyone. On behalf of the council, I want to thank the board and Ms. Hawley specifically for your continued support. Your belief in students' voice makes our work possible and meaningful. So thank you so much for this opportunity to share this support and serve in this role. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. We're going to move right along through our agenda for our consent agenda at this time, the adoption, adoption of the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion in a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented. So move Ms. Hawley, second Mr. Ingasol, all in, oh, superintendent. May we have your recommendations?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda submitted.
Superintendent has recommended that we approve the board, the agenda board. Are there any items for separate discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Excuse me? Oh, oh, yeah, motion first, motion is second. So move Mr. Ingasol. Second, Ms. Hawley, okay. All right. Now that we have that motion, do we have any items to be removed for a separate discussion or separate vote? Okay, seeing none, so now we will, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion then carries five zero. We're at our informational reports at this time, charter school informational reports. The financial statements are presented to the board for just that, information only. There's no approval of a charter school's financial statement to be required. So you have your reports before you. You can make sure you look at them at your time if you have not done also before. All right, and now we go right to superintendent's staff reports on selected topics. Dr. Prince?
Okay, thank you, Chairwoman Mills. I just wanted to remind everyone that next week, we start our graduations. We're super excited about 3,200 very proud graduates are going to be crossing that stage at the fairgrounds. Treasure Coast High is going to start us off on Thursday, May 22nd at 8:00 a.m. St. Lucy West Centennial is going to be at 1:00, and then Fort Pierce Westwood Academy is going to be at 4:00 p.m. And then the very next day on Friday, we're back at it again with Fort Pierce Central High at 8:00, Lincoln Park at 1:00, Port St. Lucy High at 4:00. I also wanted to mention that Friday Night Lights, it's always an exciting time of the year with spring football, and we have that on Friday evening. And we have been messaging at some of our venues that we are testing our metal detectors, and please make sure you arrive early at those events because we will be passing through the way you pass through them at the entry point of the building tonight. Also wanted to mention, before I jump into one other topic, is the, this is the last board meeting before the last day of the school year. This is our last board meeting. I want to wish all of the folks out there a very safe end to the school year, if you have children in the system, and also a very safe summer, hopefully of, if you have children, you know summertime's an exciting time to get away and maybe take a little vacation or enjoy your summer, and then we're right back at it next year. Summer school starts June 9th, grades three through eight, and ends July 14th. St. Lucy Public Schools is like the 7-Eleven. We never stop, we never sleep, we just continue throughout the year, especially with our 12-month employees. But I wanted to hit on something that our union president talked about a little bit, and that's really about, we had our first week of testing last week, and we tested reading, and I cannot, I'm not going to disclose to the board today how well we did or how well I think we did, but I think it's another banner year for St. Lucy Public Schools. Superintendents, principals, APs, food service clerks, you name it, maintenance, everybody in the system, the only people who raise student achievement is teachers. Teachers raise student achievement, and that's spoken as the husband of a teacher and the father of a teacher. I know how important teaching is and how hard our teachers work, and I can tell you that our outcomes aren't possible without the hard work of our teachers. But there's a lot of things that go into that, a lot of supports that are in place for our teachers to make sure our students arrive safely, get fed morning and lunch, also get home safely, that they're loved and cared for within our school system. So I can't tell you how proud I am of the, the work that we've done. We're not at our destination yet. I can tell you, nobody likes mediocrity. I don't expect mediocrity when I send my kids to school. I don't like average. I want outstanding. I want excellence each and every day, and that is my expectation. And, and we hold our students accountable, we hold our adults accountable. And I'm just going to throw that out there because I think we have a culture of accountability, but we have accountability and care. I will say that I respect our union partners, I love our union partners. In fact, I invited David out to lunch today to talk about the issues he just spoke about tonight, because I believe collaboration and work together and working together is the best to solve our, our problems together. And we want to make sure that, you know, our school centers are places that our people want to go work in, but also our children want to learn in. So with that being said, I want to wish everyone a great week. This week, we're testing math. Next week, it's science and social studies. I'm proud of the work that all of the folks are doing in our school centers, and I know our outcomes are going to be historic for St. Lucy Public Schools. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much, Dr. Prince, for your remarks. We go to Attorney Scott. Do you have any comments or reports for us?
No reports.
Thank you, Attorney Scott. We move on to school board member reports, but we first, first, we're going to cover action item here. It's the approval of the board members' out-of-district travel request to attend the FSBA FADSS Annual Summer Conference that will take place June 11th through June 13th in Tampa, Florida. And we will open up for a public hearing for any public comments. Are there any regarding this item? I must tell you that the board members that will be out of the district traveling is myself and Ms. Hawley. We will be the ones that will attend that annual summer conference in Tampa. Are there any comments from the public at this time? You can come to the podium if you want to say anything regarding this particular issue. Okay, seeing none? May I have a motion in a second from the board? So move Mr. Ingasol? Second, Ms. Hawley? Okay, do we have any discussion, board members? All right, seeing none? Motion carries five zero. Well, I should ask, all in favor first?
Yeah.
All in favor? I figured since there was no discussion, but all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, board members, let's have your reports. We will start out with Ms. Arison this evening.
No report.
No report, Ms. Arison, okay. Ms. Richardson, next, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So recently, I visited Southport, the home of the Hurricanes. Southport truly stands as a hidden gem in our school district. Thank you, Mrs. McFadden, for the warm reception. Just like Publix, where shopping is a pleasure. Principal Lamb graciously took me through the school. Our first stop was at the cafeteria, where preschoolers were on a field trip. The preschoolers on a field trip were being treated to a special performance. Southport, in collaboration with Port St. Lucy High School, presented the Aristocats for these young visitors. What particularly moved me was seeing ESE students performing along with their peers who provided guidance, both delivering a magnificent performance. This collaboration spoke to me on so many levels. My sincere gratitude to all involved for developing this thoughtful initiative. As we walked... As we walked the campus, Principal Lamb shared her vision for the school, including plans for implementation this summer. Throughout our walk, Mrs. Lamb engaged with the students individually, addressing each by name. And I know principals, I'm not saying anything to you that's not familiar, because every time I've been on a campus with the principal, they have been, they address, they know their students, name by name. So, you know, just just for emphasis, one of Principal Lamb's clear passion is protecting and nurturing all students with an emphasis on the most vulnerable students on her campus, affirming their worth and potential. Behind every exceptional principal stands an equally remarkable team, who I will always refer to as our frontline heroes, the ones with their boots on the ground. These dedicated professionals go above and beyond, approaching challenges with creativity and fresh perspective that raise the standards and foster meaningful change. I especially enjoyed my visit to the library. There was just something special about this particular library. I can't put my finger on it. Maybe it's called love? In any event, it was soothing, cozy, and especially welcoming, an atmosphere truly conducive to learning. Mrs. Mass, and I hope I'm saying your name correctly, the librarian, transformed her office into a sanctuary for learning and a functional broadcast studio, ingeniously utilizing limited space to support student talent, which I was assured is exceptional and to support creativity. Thank you, Mrs. Mass, for your love for our students and sacrifice of your office. I also learned that Southport is developing some impressive athletic stars as well. They truly are putting themselves on the map. Go Hurricanes! To paraphrase Michael Jackson and Lionel Richie's powerful lyrics, "We are the world; these are our children. We are the ones to make a brighter day, so they know someone cares and that their lives will be stronger and free." Principal Lamb, Assistant Principal Avila, and all the educators at Southport, thank you for making these words a reality for your students, and I salute you all. Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Just one more, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you concluded.
I was turning the page, but thank you.
I know we are all still testing, and I wish you continued success. To our class of 2025, always remember, there is no limit to what you can do if you keep believing in yourselves. Congratulations to you and to your parents. Now this ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. I will move right along with Mr. Ingersoll.
No report.
All right, Mr. Ingersoll. Okay, Ms. Hawley?
No report.
Okay, no report, no report from myself. But we do have another report from Dr. Prince.
Yes, Madam Chair, I was remiss, I forgot a very important introduction. We have a new assistant principal we're approving, or we approved tonight, and that's Sudane Lewis, the new assistant principal at Manne TKA8. And you've got family here, Sudane, so. By the way, family, please stand. If you've got family, okay, I'm just checking, double check, okay, all right, all right, there you go. Congratulations, the new generation of leaders at Manne TKA8. I apologize that that slipped, so there you go. These people over here keep me in line, so thank you.
Okay, at this time, we do have a scheduled speaker. Ms. Gwendolyn MacLeod is here. And Ms. Gwendolyn, would you please come to the podium? Longtime community friend, welcome to the school board. It's good to see you here.
Thank you, thank you, so glad to be here, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Prince. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight.
You will have five minutes as a scheduled speaker?
Yes.
And the attorney will keep count.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, well, thanks again for allowing me to be here tonight. For those of you who are not aware who I am, my name is Ms. Gwen MacLeod. I'm the CEO and founder of the We Leap Violence Prevention Organization located right here in St. Lucie County, but we do provide services on the Treasure Coast. I wanted to let you know just a little bit about the things that we do. Who we were or previously were known for was primarily our work with teen dating violence and domestic violence awareness in the community. Who we are now has expanded to include services such as gun violence prevention and awareness, as well as gang violence prevention and awareness. As we are aware, there is a lot that is taking place within our communities, and our organization wanted to step up in the areas where we feel that certain things were lacking as it pertains to the different organizations that were out there. So we wanted to add to what is already out there and collaborate and strengthen our communities. As it was previously mentioned earlier, May is also Mental Health Awareness Month, so I just want to take just a brief moment just to talk about the trauma from mental health and community violence. So community violence can lead to significant psychological distresses, including trauma for individuals and communities. Exposure to violence can result in mental health issues like depression, anxiety, and post-traumatic stress disorders. Students are particularly vulnerable to these effects, and trauma can impact their development and well-being. I just want to jump down here, and I want to talk about the impact on caregivers. Caregivers of students affected by community violence may also experience stress, worry, and difficulty in providing adequate support and care. Increased exposure to violence can increase the risk of individuals becoming victims or perpetrators of violence in the future. I wanted to just take time to read that because my purpose for being here tonight was basically on behalf of our community. There was an incident that took place on April 30th within our community, and it was an active shooter incident where one young man was actually pronounced dead in the community. There was a lot of chatter and a lot of communication going back, was and forth via social media. I received a few emails in regards to it. And so basically, what I wanted to do was try to get to the root of some of the concerns. And some of the concerns were regarding that particular incident was parents felt that their children were released, you know, during an active shooter alert. They weren't notified, that there was a breakdown in communication somehow. Being, as Madam Chair said, I'm heavily engaged within our community. My first move was to try to get to the bottom of it before I even came to this meeting. And so with that being said, I had an opportunity to reach out to the St. Lucie County Sheriff's Department and had a conversation with them, and they assured me that, you know, the different things that were put in place that day were to keep everyone safe, and at the time that the students were released, that the area had already been cleared and deemed safe. So with that being said, I wanted to come forth tonight as an advocate for our community and as a voice for our community. A lot of times, people from Fort Pierce may not drive all the way here to St. Lucie County. My goal now, with the extension of us now adding other forms of violence prevention into our plethora of services that we provide, is to be the voice and be the face for our community. So with that being said, although this is ending up this school year, I hope to be a little bit more active next school year. And I did want to give the board the opportunity to address some of those community concerns. Instead of 12 or 15 people coming up, I'm coming up now. There may be some people that's coming up after me pertaining to this issue, I'm not aware. But the St. Lucie County Sheriff's Department assured me that everything was all clear and it was safe before those students were released, and I'm thankful for that. However, I just looked at how everything was responded to and that there was a breakdown in communication of that fact that left some already traumatized individuals in the community in a not-so-happy place, if you get what I'm saying. That was my whole point of talking about trauma in communities, because we do know that in certain parts of our communities, experience more trauma than others, and those students are expected to function and do those best, do their best in those areas. So I just wanted to address that tonight and speak up on behalf of our community, keep our kids safe. I think my time is up, is that right, Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. MacLeod, and thank you for being that voice in the community. And I'm glad you got some answers before you got here from the Sheriff's Department because we take pride in keeping our students safe. Thank you so much for your comments. At this time, with no further ado, I think all minds are clear. Our children this week, y'all, some of y'all know I'm a praying woman. Y'all pray for our children this week. They're in testing time, and they're, it's very stressful for them, but it's something that we must do to abide by the rules and regulations of the state of Florida. So keep our children your prayers, have a safe trip back home and journey, and have a restful evening. We are adjourned.